Before we get into the agenda, if those in the room wouldn't mind introducing themselves, I will start with my esteemed colleague to my right, the vice-chairing clerk.
Liz Banks.
And I'm Kevin Kelly.
Fidelis Ongobueke.
Marge Cooney.
White Gill.
Ruth Fitzgerald.
Charles Linell.
Jean Booban.
And, thank you so much for being here, Jean. The agenda. We kicked off at 6:30. We'll start with a review of the minutes of January 17, 2018. It is a meeting that Ms. Cooney and I were not in attendance, but I will ask if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, or corrections regarding the meeting minutes.
I wasn't here.
So we're counting on Mr. Young, Fidelis, the vice-chair, Liz Banks.
I don't have any.
I don't see nothing.
No, I don't have any issues.
Okay. Without further ado, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Three.
Two extensions.
All right, at 6:35, we've got a few minutes. It's not 6:35 yet. There will be a special permit request, 26 Long Avenue, Ms. Ruth Fitzgerald, who's here tonight. "The applicant is requesting a special permit to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use and structure for the property located at 26 Long Avenue. The applicant is proposing a six-foot addition on the home currently under construction with a proposed nine-foot porch on the rear of the house." At 7:00 PM, we have old and new business, and if everybody is in agreement, we will thereafter adjourn. So we have a couple of minutes before we start our 7:35 open meeting. I don't think we can get going.
6:35.
6:35.
6:35, yeah, okay. We've got a couple of minutes before 6:35. Is there anything that you want to get to old and new business now? Any old business, Mr. Young?
I have none.
Marge?
Nothing.
Fidelis?
Absolutely not.
I have none. Liz?
None.
All right, and we'll get right into new business. Liz?
Nothing.
Nothing from me? Fidelis?
No.
We've got to drag this out a couple more minutes. Marge, you must have some new business.
No, I don't.
And I would find it hard to believe that Michael Young doesn't have new business.
I have no business.
Wow.
But I'll say that very slowly so it can kill another 15 or 30 seconds.
All right, well, thank you very much. Jean, how about you? You must have some announcements. We've got continuing education coming up.
Yes, we do. So on March 17, at Holy Cross College is the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. It's an all-day event. We do have funds in our budget. If anyone is interested in attending, let Rebecca know with your course selections, and we will schedule, send your registration in and pay the tab. They always have a nice meal. I am attending. Rebecca is attending. I believe the building department staff is attending as well. We can probably carpool from here if people are interested, or not carpool from here if you're not interested.
All right, can you keep it going? Another minute. What else? What else is new? The planning board?
Special town meeting coming up.
Special town meeting is coming up Monday, the 26th. The warrant is on the town website. The meeting starts at 7:00 PM at Tantasca High School. Get out and vote.
There you go. All right, one more minute. Liz, you must have some.
The next meeting will be March 21. You'll have a very busy evening that night. We just received several applications today. You'll have, I believe, a special permit for an addition onto a home on Clark Road Extension. The old, long vacant Roy Rogers down the road here is being proposed to being renovated by Petrogas.
To what?
It will be an apple green, which is actually an Irish company. So they'll rehabilitate the store, the restaurant into food service convenience store, play area for children, and gas.
That's down Route 15.
On Route 15, and the Hebert's Candy. You will have a doggy daycare center coming in that night as well. So it'll be a very busy March.
Speaking of that meeting, unfortunately, regretfully, I will be in New Orleans that day.
You're killing me. No.
So I'll bring you back a beignet, but...
Bring yourself back so we have somebody here.
Yeah.
Do that. I'll be there for a few days. Okay, so it's 6:35. I guess we proceed now with the reading of the public notice.
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street on February 21, 2018, at 6:35, on the application of Ruth Fitzgerald, 26 Long Ave., Sturbridge, Mass. "The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05 of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use and structure for the property located at 26 Long Ave. The applicant is proposing a six-foot addition on the house currently under construction with a proposed nine-foot porch on the rear of the house. A copy of the application may be inspected at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this petition should appear at the same time and place designated." Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Liz. Before we get going, I kind of want to tee this up a little bit, just so we can start where we began back on Wednesday, July 5, 2017. So I just want to read briefly from the meeting minutes of that day, that evening. So a motion was made by Ms. Banks to grant the determination to Ruth Fitzgerald to demolish the existing house and rebuild a single-family home according to the plans entitled "Plan of Land in Sturbridge Prepared by Mohawk Unlimited, Prepared by Sherman &amp; Friedrich, LLC, Learning Surveying and Engineering Project Number 17001A Revision 1, dated May 24, 2017", architectural plans, detached house, 26 Long Avenue, Lot 55, Sturbridge, Mass., prepared by Tom Hawkins Building and Design, planned date March 30, 2017, for the property located on 26 Long Ave. And this board did so because in its findings, it determined that the determination does not intensify the existing or create non-conformities, and the owner, of course, may apply for a building permit for the described activities. All permits must be obtained prior to the start of construction, and that was by a six, it was a unanimous vote, vote 6-0. So now it seems that we're back here, things changed a little bit. So I'm going to open it up to you folks to very meticulously, if you will, and very carefully walk us through, fold our hands through this, lead us by the nose, and discuss why this project specifically changed, what were the specific changes, and just be as specific as you can.
Excuse me. Before we proceed, were the buttes notified? Were they green?
Yes.
Because we didn't have it in the buttes list.
Yes, I have all the cards here.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Banks.
And that's for this meeting?
It is. He just handed them to me when they walked in.
Okay. All right, we just checked that box. So go ahead. I mean, we really need as much information as we can, and there have been some changes according to the application, seems to be possibly significant changes, so walk us through.
Okay. When I ripped the original house down, the lot was very wet. According to, or a stipulation from conservation, had to be put a two-foot drip guard of stone around the new building. When we started digging for the foundation, the lot is extremely wet. Instead of putting a normal concrete foundation, we put it on technopoles, which creates no damage. Also, another stipulation from conservation was I could not raise the elevation of the lot. So what I did was we drilled in the technopoles, and I turned the hole underneath the house. It's all stone, 12 inches deep, two feet around the perimeter. When you get to the back of the house, the property in the back, the people's house, there's also a town-owned paper road in the back, and if you're looking at the front of the house, the people on the right, all their property, all their flat roof, everybody's water comes into her backyard. So when you go out the back slider, that's where the catch basin is. So as we were building, and I put the stairs in the closet in the back room of the house, it closed up her art gallery more than she liked. So she asked if we could put a six-foot addition on the back, which I feel will help the water problem over there, because I can extend the house 14 feet and add another 400 square feet of drainage, which will absolutely help the whole neighborhood over there on the right side and behind the house. Because right now, the yard is not really usable. That's how wet it is.
Okay. So let me see if I can just simplify what you said.
No, great.
Lot's wet.
Lot's wet. We thought about a paper patio in the back.
Yeah.
It won't stay.
So help me get to let wet lot to art gallery.
Well, excuse me. It's not a gallery, it's a studio.
Okay.
I'm an artist, and I paint and do...
Yeah.
It's going to be like a work space.
No, I completely understand that, and I think that's fabulous. I'm just trying to get in my head how we go from wet lot to needing to put this extension on, which...
She would like the extension before the wet lot, but the wet lot is a very, it's a very good fix to the problem of the wet lot without having to worry about trying about the neighbor's water or runoff or trying to let the people in the back.
So the studio is a fix to the water problem?
Kind of, because right now, her yard is not usable.
Okay.
She couldn't go out to her backyard and hang out.
Yeah.
So the extension to the art studio is just a certain extension that she would like, and it will help with the wet lot. She'll be able to use more of her lot.
Okay.
Go ahead, Marge. Now, I agree with you that the lot was very wet, having taken a walk yesterday, rather, a site visit yesterday. Now, you say there's a paper road. I couldn't see from anything where there is a paper road.
The shed that's in the backyard is actually sitting on the paper road.
It's sitting on the paper road?
Yes.
Now...
That piece of property right there is the town's paper road.
How wide is that paper road?
I'm not real sure how wide the town's paper roads are, what they even do with the paper road.
I'm not familiar that it shows anywhere as a paper road.
Yeah, I know. Or, this is what the engineer told me, this is what Mr. Frederick told me.
I have a small map from...
I was probably wrong. This one I drew, yeah, this one I drew, this one the architect told me.
According to here, there's no paper road. That's what I'm looking at.
The paper road is actually, where's the front?
This is the front.
Okay, the paper road actually cuts right here. This piece of property on this side is very, very small, and they're covered.
No, I know, I saw that.
Way more. But the paper road actually comes from the other side of this road down this side, and it comes into this fence. I'm not sure how the road travels.
All right. This is the way I view it, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
This, you say, is very small, this lot.
That lot is very small, the giant house, yeah. And there's a road.
It's not nearly as small as this one. This one is larger, from what I saw.
Not square footage-wise, it's not. The house next door with the deck and everything is actually longer than this one. What we're just talking about is the paper road.
But this lot is bigger.
This lot can't be bigger, because there's a road that travels right here. This is right away to the house that's out here in the back corner.
No, I understand that, but I was up there, and there's definitely, there's a lot bigger than 30 feet frontage. Lot bigger, that lot I'm talking about.
Is there something that shows the...
That's not even my lot.
Oh, okay.
This is the lot we're working on.
No, this is the lot here that we're talking about.
If the paper road runs right here, it must be a moth of this right away, because it's straight in high narrow.
All right. Now, your shed was here.
Yes.
So this is, on this property is what you stipulated previously when you were here for the determination.
Yes.
I just find it a little strange that somebody would have a shed there with the door opening facing the property that we're talking about.
That's her shed.
All right.
That's her shed. The people that owned this house before built the deck so big on the back of the house that they had to put that. They put that shed right onto the paper road. So where that shed is, is the paper road.
We have, I, can you, you just said the paper road was down here.
No, no, no. This is right away.
This is the right one.
Right away on the other side.
And the paper road is over there. Okay.
I tried to find an assessor's map that had that paper road on it, and I was not able to.
I couldn't find any paper road. I'm sorry.
So...
That's what the engineer told me.
But does he have a map that has it on there that...
I would imagine that the town would have the map. But in order for me to get the map for him, I would have to pay more money to have him check out the paper road.
Can I ask a question of the board?
Yeah.
Regarding this paper road, help me understand, because I'm just not getting it this evening, how the paper road affects the special permit.
Well, sometimes people can traverse that paper road.
Right.
Well, understand that.
If it's still active, but there's nothing that shows a paper road. Now, for instance, you're familiar with my road.
Yeah.
There's a so-called paper road at the end.
Right.
Okay? And it's shown in some documentation on it, you know, when the first subdivision was done, but it doesn't show it. It's still used as a paper road, and the engineers and surveyors are aware that it is a paper road. It gives access to other lots.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't recall the paper road discussion coming up during the July...
It didn't.
It didn't.
The only reason bringing the paper road up now is to aid in the separation. She's going to be 11 and 1/2 feet from the property line, and when I read the zoning laws, they're worried about being detrimental from the runoff of the extra house, or being close to the neighbor, or blocking views across the street.
Yeah.
None of that, none of this addition will even affect that. The way the property is set, her property goes straight back.
Mm-hmm.
There's no houses behind her. Off to the right-hand side, further back, there's a house that's set back that has no view of her yard anyway.
And that house owns the land, is, I'm guessing, that comes right up to her property, correct? Right where the shed is?
Supposedly, according to my engineer and surveyor, the town of Sturbridge owns that area that separates Mrs. Fitzgerald's yard from the neighbor in the back. So there is a separation.
That's what I was told at my closing, the lawyer, when they did the...
Oh, they must, I was going to say, you must have gotten them...
About the paper road.
Do you have a deed description or anything?
I didn't know, I would have frauded if I...
Yeah, because I don't...
I just have a map, and like, I know it's right, that shows...
The paper road, it doesn't really have anything to do with this, other than extra separation from the neighbors in the back.
Well, that may be true, but it's causing at least a little consternation with the board.
I can't explain what a paper road is. I have no idea. All I know is that the engineer told me that there is a town of Sturbridge paper road that belongs to her property, to the neighbor behind her. And if you go, the people that live on the right, they don't even have parking area in their yard around their house. They don't have any parking area whatsoever. They have to park across the street, but behind their house, where the paper road supposedly is, is kind of here. But then the neighbor on the left side, if you're looking at the front of the house, there's a fence that goes straight on down. I don't know if the paper road is there to get to the retention pond for the drainage that's further out in the woods, so that they can access that. I have no idea what that's for. I was told by the engineer, you cannot use that, that is the town's property.
Okay. Jean, as the town planner, any comment on this paper versus non-paper road?
No, I was just looking to see if I had her deed here, and I don't.
Yeah, that would help me a lot if I had a deed description.
I mean, in my opinion...
Hang on one minute. Hang on one minute, please. Just wanted to hear the town planner.
I would agree with Mr. Kelly that I'm not sure the relevance to the paper road to this application, because it doesn't add any square footage to this application. I think Mr. Linell maybe unsuccessfully was trying to show that there's additional space behind this property line that adds more of a buffer, as he was trying to talk about the not more detrimental aspects of the application. So we have many paper roads in town, and sometimes we can find a lot of information on them, and other times, we just can't, so...
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but go ahead.
I was just getting back to the point of the separation.
Okay.
That's the only reason I brought up the paper road. We don't want to use it, we don't want to build on it, we don't want to do anything. I just want to use it as separation to the back.
Understood. Okay. So one of the issues here is we've gone from a, we've gone from a non-conformity to an increased non-conformity, right? Lot coverage from 39% to 49%?
Actually brings it more conforming than the original house was.
All right. Can you walk me through how that occurs?
No.
Okay.
This is what I was told at the last meeting.
Yeah, at the last meeting, what we had, we had a 40% lot coverage.
Right.
With the old house.
Okay.
The determination was granted because in good faith, the proponent brought it down to 39% lot coverage.
Right.
So for our point of view, this was more, you know, better for us.
Right.
I don't want to take the whole discussion, so I'll defer to somebody else.
Go ahead.
But right now, what we're talking about is something totally different, where we brought down the percentage of coverage by 1%. We're now going to 49%.
So it's increasing 10% from the original house that was there.
So... Exactly.
Okay.
All right, so I'll defer to anybody else.
So, and that's why they're here on the special permit. They've made additions to the plans, amendments to the plans. It's increased the lot coverage by, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 10%.
It is 10%, yes.
Okay, it's 10%. So why is that a big deal?
Because you got 3% area of the lot.
Yeah, so what?
It was very wet.
Well, no, I'm just, help me, I mean, is 10%, is 10%, is it detrimental?
As far as I'm concerned, it is.
Okay.
Can I ask you why you find that detrimental?
Well, you know, we all have a wish list, but we already have, I mean, the requirements under the bylaws now, a three-quarter acre for suburban residential, which is what that is already. And I don't recall, I don't have the paper, but you went up on the house. You increased the height of the house, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And so basically, you did change the envelope originally when you came forward to us, and we were agreeable to it, because you tried to work and bring it more into conformity as far as lot coverage. From my point of view, we all have wish lists, and they don't always comport what the intent of the bylaw is, so...
Which is why we're here for the special permit.
Yeah.
No, that's actually, that's right. And what I'm attempting to do is tease out the discussion as to whether or not, although this is an increase in the non-conformity, whether this is a deal breaker. You've heard from Mrs. Cooney?
By doing the addition, it adds an additional 400 square feet of drainage for that whole area, for the neighbors on the right, for the neighbors behind, for the town road that's behind the property.
So your argument is that, yeah, okay, we're increasing lot coverage by 10%, but in doing that, we are mitigating drainage issues for not only that particular piece of property, but for the neighbors as well.
Correct.
Okay. Can I, can I ask how that's going to improve the drainage? Can you clarify how, because you're taking up, you're increasing the lot coverage, so, you know, by effect, you're also decreasing the, you know, amount of land, you know, for circulation and all that. So how is this going to improve on the drainage?
One of conservation's stipulations was that I put the two-foot by one-foot stone around the drip guard, I think. I did better than that. I put it on technopoles, and the entire, underneath the entire house, it's all stone and drainage for that property now.
Okay, so...
So instead of the 400 square feet that conservation wanted, you're now at 1,400 square feet of drainage for the property that wasn't going to be used anyways. So it's going to, like Mr. Kelly said, it's going to mitigate the water problem. And as Cooney said, in the backyard, it's definitely wet.
So just for further clarification, with this extension, you're going to add more of the stone and...
Correct. You will end up about 1,400 to 1,600 square feet of drainage for that lot.
Would you still...
So it might be 50% covered, but it's also 60% drainage for that area.
But you still have runoff on the additions, because you've got roofs on them as well.
That's why conservation required that I put in a two-foot drip guard.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Is the, pardon me, is the porch going to be a covered porch?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it faucets in, or...
This is going to be a screened porch. You have no glass, just screened porch.
Okay.
Can't, you can't, are you saying that you can't cover that drainage? You can't do the drainage unless you put the addition on the house?
Yeah, no. The drainage is actually a big bed of stone.
But you can't just do that anyway?
I could, but why would she want that in the backyard? She wants to go out there and hang out.
Which she can't right now.
I don't know.
Which she can't right now. And even during the summertime, when it was blowing dry, when I was tearing the house down, you couldn't go out there. I was digging, July we had the meeting, so by August last year, I was digging, and that lot was wet. We dug three feet down, and there was water in the bottom of the hole.
So your, your argument is that this is going to be a win-win situation? You're saying it's going to be a win for the applicant, and it's going to be a win for...
For the neighborhood.
For the neighborhood.
Correct. I feel that. That's the way I feel. But that's the way it is.
Michael, questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, it's kind of a cute little neighborhood, isn't it? It's kind, it's got kind of that little storybook cottage feel to it when you, when you drive down that little road.
I can start off.
So it's a nice spot, and, you know, like all our lakefront properties, you have all these little lots, which is always a problem. We're always getting special permit requests. You know, I have to honestly say, I don't really see that this is going to be any more detrimental to the neighborhood. To make the property usable, if the best way to make it usable is have a little bit, another six feet on the back of the house and a screened-in porch, you know, I really don't think that's going to hurt the neighborhood. The land, yeah, the land behind there, the, what we believe... Yeah, the land behind there, the, what we believe to be is a paper road, and what we believe to be is another small town-owned parcel does create a buffer. If there was another property line and your screened-in porch was going to butt right up to somebody else's screened-in porch in the back, it would certainly be a lot different than what we're looking at right now. So, I'm going to say that I would have no problem with this project proceeding as proposed here tonight.
So I see the fundamental question that this board has to, has to answer is, we have an intensification of a non-conformity, but will that intensification of a non-conformity, and I certainly understand Ms. Cooney's point of view on lot coverage, but will this non, the intensification of this non-conformity, is it, is it, is it going to be more or less detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood? So that's what I think fundamentally the question to resolve this special permit issue is. Liz?
Well, the thing that concerns me is that the addition's going to increase the non-conformity by 10% and cover almost 50% of the lot, which is way more than the 15% allowed. But now, it appears the shed also belongs to this property. So it really, if you add the shed's dimensions...
The shed is a movable, non-taxable outbuilding.
But it's, it would, it should be included in the lot coverage, because it's a building on the lot. So that concerns me also.
So I can repair the shed, and with the addition, I can give her storage under the, under the end of the house and get rid of the shed altogether.
But you said the shed doesn't belong to you.
Yes, the shed does belong to us, but the property that it's sitting on right now does not.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's not what was stipulated in the previous discussion. You said previously that that belonged to the neighbor.
Yeah, I...
It's in, we, I, I think, I don't know if I included my notes there.
The building department also had a stipulation that when I was done building, that that shed came onto this property, so maybe I put it out there incorrectly?
Well, what it says, the meeting minutes say, is that, in reference to the shed, says there is a shed on the property. Mr. Linell stated that the shed is not on the applicant's property.
It's not on the applicant's property, but it is the applicant's...
So, was that included in lot coverage too? No.
I did not know that was supposed to be covered in lot coverage.
All right, there, so we're increasing lot coverage again. It depends on the size of the shed, whether or not you need a permit or anything. And sheds, sheds are included in the lot coverage, and they're...
What are the dimensions of the shed? Does anybody know?
It was a good size, that's why...
It's on the original paperwork, right? And I believe Mr. Kelly's correct. When I came here the last time, I said that that was her shed, but it was not on her property.
I mean, that's what, I mean, I, that's what, that's what, I've read for the meeting minutes regarding the shed.
Well, the inference there with the discussion was that it did not belong to them.
That's what I understood.
That was the understanding of this board, the way it came out.
I read that way on that paper.
Well, it says, again, I'll...
It's all our coverage.
So we have an eight-by-ten shed that came with the original property from the original owner that's been actually sitting on town-owned land.
And it's, it's sitting where it shouldn't be sitting.
Well, we don't know if that's town-owned land. We don't have anything that tells us that.
We don't know that, and we have no writing on it. We have no deed description that says it.
We don't have a map with the paper road on it, so...
But it's on land beyond the lot line-
Right.
-of the lot.
But I, well, yeah, this is why I precipitated the first comment about why would you have a shed there if the door is facing the house? Okay?
I've known all along that was her shed. I knew all along that was her shed.
Well, that wasn't conveyed to us. You remember that, Mr. Fidelis? I do, too.
If the shed's an issue, as I said, I will devolve the shed and give her storage under that end of the house, under the house.
So storage under means that you don't have the drainage under anymore?
There you go. We're going round robin. Exactly, you don't have it.
I didn't hear what you said.
No, I mean, if you, if you say you're going to use under the house for storage, what happens to the drainage? Are we still going to have drainage there?
The back of the house is going to be five and a half feet off the ground, so I can build an area under there, up off the ground, so that she can store her yard.
What's, excuse me, you lost me a little. What's going to be fi, five and a half feet off the ground?
The back of the house. The back of the house right now is almost four and a half feet, I think. To reach the slider on the back of the house, yeah, it's probably five feet from the ground.
You see, I'm seeing a lot of hypothetical stuff.
Well, I was there, and that's not five feet.
To the bottom.
It wasn't taller than me.
No, no, just to the bottom of the slider, but when I bring that out a little bit, I'm probably going to get another foot of elevation. It's probably four feet right now. So when it's finished, the back will probably be five feet to the bottom of the floor from the ground. There's ample room for storage under the house if the shed's an issue.
Okay, so to recap, the concerns a little bit here is, we have, we have an intensification of the non-conformity by 10%. We have an eight-by-10 shed, which it doesn't seem like we have a handle on whether or not it is included in the lot coverage.
But that is not included in the lot coverage.
No, it's not.
Okay, so it's not included, so then we go to part B, is the shed on the property of Ms. Fitzgerald?
No, it's not. It isn't right now.
And why isn't it on the property of...
It was set there before I even got to the...
Long time ago, okay.
It has been out there for a long time, yes.
Okay. And is it a usable shed? Is it...
Yeah.
And currently, you'd agree that you store your implements in that shed?
Sure. Well, yeah, I don't live there yet, as the house is under construction, but yes, it would be ideal for lawnmower...
But it's on property, you don't know who the owner is. Is that fair?
Well, it's the paper street. It was talk of the paper street, I've got my clothes in. The lawyers did find evidence of it in the title search and so forth, and it was the previous owner that placed the shed there.
Okay.
And not including that in the lot coverage was probably my error.
Well, if it's not on the lot...
It's a movable.
So...
Not on the lot.
It's not permanent structure, it doesn't have a foundation.
Yeah, I know, but it's still, under the bylaw, would be considered in the calculation of lot coverage.
Now, you, you have sliding doors on the rear of the house now?
I have a slider on the back, yes. It's temporary.
Oh, I was just going to say, why, why was that even put on?
Because I needed to close, the house is all sheet rock now. I have it all insulated, all sheet rock.
No, no, when you put the sliders on, so apparently you put the sliders on feeling that you're, because I, I can't measure the property, that's not under my purview, but it made me wonder whether you already incorporated that six-foot increase.
Those never incorporated, those never incorporated.
Because it just seems strange putting sliders there, where you don't know whether or not you're going to get approval on this.
Regardless, so whether it stays or whether it goes, it needed to be there, whether it stays, that's, that's or not.
So...
The door was in the frame. It needed to go in. The house, as I said, the house is all wired, sheet rock, rock homing, it's done, everything's ready.
Yeah, sure, there's a lot of debris around, too. A lot of stuff that wasn't, I, I mean, to me, I, I don't know, as long as I've been on this board, I don't think I've ever seen a lot, 3,000 square feet with this much coverage on it. I don't know. Am I wrong, Mrs. Bulbarn?
No, you're probably correct. There's, I mean, there's some that are existing that...
That are existing, 5,047. I've never seen one...
That's covered that much, but I can't recall anything recently that's come...
And we already changed the envelope of it. And now we're again changing it, which is...
So what would, how would the lot coverage increase if the shed were on the property? How much would it increase by?
We'll smash the shed. Let's get rid of the shed. That's a hang-up for everybody. Let's get rid of the shed.
Well, that's not necessarily a hang-up for me. I just think overall, I mean, but I don't...
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to get to, you smashed the shed, now we're talking about building something underneath the addition, right?
Correct.
Which makes me think, which brings me to Fidelis's concern that he brought up about, okay, if you're going to build something that's going to store Ms. Fitzgerald's implement, gardening tools, how is that going to impact the drainage?
It won't.
So, so that's what I don't understand. How wouldn't it?
It's going to be on the house.
Yeah.
Under an already covered area, so there's not going to be extra drainage falling on it. It's going to be raised above the ground-
Yeah.
-so that the stone and everything can still do its job, the water can run wherever it's want.
So we're not pouring any concrete pads over there? We're just keeping the, what is it, three-quarters stone?
Yeah. I'll keep in the stone all the way. I will hang a shelf, a box, whatever, from the floor joists, just so she can store her up. She doesn't have a big yard left.
Right.
She doesn't need a bunch of outside stuff.
Right. Understood.
Minimal storage, just a box, a shelf hanging from the floor joists under the house.
So if the shed goes bye-bye, and this, underneath the addition proposal is implemented, we go back to...
That, the under...
Yeah, I got to finish. Because this thought, I have a very small brain. This thought's got to come out of my head, or I'll botch it up. So, so, let me botch this up. So, so, the question comes back to, we're at a increase in the non-conformity by 10%, and does that increase in the non-conformity, I mean, is that not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity before it was changed? I mean, does it impact the, does it make, does it make the property more detrimental to the neighborhood?
No.
Boy, no, that's what you say. But I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm talking hypothetically to my colleagues here. I understand your opinion. You're on the record, and no.
So of which his argument is that his increase in the drainage?
Right.
So...
His increase in the drainage, that's a good thing.
On a very wet lawn.
You're going to have to go back to conservation, then?
No.
No.
You already did it, conservation.
Only ten feet of the front of the house, it's actually just the front porch lands in conservation's 200-foot buffer. But with the paved road in the front, and the stipulations that they placed on me about not raising the elevation of the lot, which means I can't fill the lot to get rid of the water, I can't dig dirt out, put blockages to the stone, and raise the elevation of the property because of conservation, because of that stipulation. And all the extra drainage was a stipulation of conservation. I just feel that more drainage on the already wet lot, or just a place where all the water to go, that's under the house, and a piece of property that you can't use because it's so wet, will help.
You know what I, what I don't understand, right? So with all the wetness, why is it not designated a, in a wetland?
Can't answer. Don't know.
Good question.
Does anybody know why?
No, it's a good question.
Because it's so wet that...
Yeah, there was puddles. There was puddles of water there. You couldn't even, you know, she, we both did a site visit. I don't know if anybody else did, I think Mr. Young said he did, but I wouldn't even venture to go in the back of the lot because, well, there was debris, too.
He, does it butt?
There was a lot of debris around the lot, but...
I mean, was it a river, stream?
No, it's on the opposite side of the road. But the, the other thing that I questioned was, when you, the area for the parking of the cars and that, now, there was blacktop going, quite a bit of blacktop there that's on the ground, on the thing. So that went pretty much back also. So it just seems to me it's...
Well, I mean, conservation's been out the look of the sight.
It's going to impede some of the parking there, too.
It's not going to impede anything. You have a little tiny garden, it's only one person living there.
Well, it's one person living there, but, you know, people come in, they turn, you know?
Exactly right. That's why I saved the pavement on the right side of the house, so everybody could pull in on the right side of the house and get off the street.
I'd really like to see a deed description. I'm sorry. I, you know, I don't know where, it's my own personal thing. I just think it's a little overburdening. I'm concerned about the water there, that there might be more runoff than that, and I know we're focusing a lot on what conservation has said, but we get input from the different boards, and, but we can't base our decision on that.
Right.
We can only condition on those things.
So do you want to, does anybody have any more questions? And we could, we could stay here all night, not having such a great conversation.
I have no further questions.
All right.
Yeah, I just have one. And so the letter, or the memo from conservation, they, they, the last paragraph where it talked about having, you know, the 24-inch drip strip installed around, but they were concerned about the, the roof line, you know, if that drip strip was going to be under the roof line, and that if not, you know, maybe to increase it, or maybe to have, you know, gutters installed.
Conservation didn't want me to put gutters on.
Okay.
They don't want anything collecting the water. Honestly, this, this is why I'm here, because I can't fill the back of the lot to make it usable as a stipulation in conservation. So I can't, like I said, I can't fill it, because it's just going to push the water into the neighbor's yard.
Yeah.
And I can't make it usable if I can't fill it.
But, I mean, this was a memorandum that just got-
They answered your question.
-February 8th.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is an ongoing concern of theirs as well.
Did you say?
I just wanted to comment on this one foot.
Yep.
The 24-inch is well within the roof line. The roof line only needs over 12 inches, so the drip lands right in the middle of the drip guard that they want. But I increased that drip guard from the two feet to 24 feet. So it's 24 feet of drainage under the house where the water collects and dissipates, and it's 54 feet on. So you have 54 by 24 of drainage right now.
24 feet?
24 feet, two feet on each side of the house I had to go. It's a massive amount of drainage, and I feel that it needs a little bit more, only because the stipulations from conservation, I can't fill it and make it usable.
So, so...
I'm going to use it the way it is right now.
So two feet on each side, and then you have the roof overhang as what, 12, 1?
12 inches, yeah. There is no water, even in the downpour, even with all the melt-off that we had, there is no water escaping from under her house and going to anybody's yard. It is not going anywhere. It's staying right there. And the pavement on the right side leans into the drip guard on this side, it's catching every single bit, every single bit. The more drainage I can get on the backside, the better it's going to be, the better it's going to be.
Excuse me, this sketch I have for assessed proposed building, that was from the previous? Does this, do you love this?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this, this does not comport what, what they're telling us. What does it say here?
That's probably all, because here says 49 on this, and here says...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We got this in there, and it doesn't comport what the application says.
This is the old table, and then the side profile was sketched on the old table. The 39%...
But it says add, add 120 feet of...
By...
And, you know, this is...
That's a new sketch?
That's a new sketch on the old table.
On the...on the side, but...
And so he took the old table to show where he was at when it was approved.
Right. But I don't see, you know, it doesn't tell us anything about drip or drainage.
That's true.
The narrative does.
Well, the narrative does to a point, yeah. So... I did read the narrative, but it's up to...
So Fidelis had talked about the...we get some memos. Fidelis had talked about the conservation. Before I get to the memorands we got from other departments, Liz, do you have any follow-up questions?
No.
Okay, now the line. Fidelis, Marge is reading. Michael?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. So I hope you received these. Conservation Commission memorandum dated February 8, 2018.
I thought Rebecca sent them to you. Here, let me give you my copies.
A Conservation Commission memo dated February 3, 2017. You haven't had an opportunity to review these memos, I take it. Memo from the Fire Department dated January 30, 2018. All right. Fire Department doesn't have any major concerns in adding the six-foot addition as well as the nine-foot porch. Smoke detectors you gotta install, building numbering, be in compliance with match general law. And that was by Lieutenant John Marinelli. We have a email from the Board of Health. Is that right? Yes. Dated January 31, 2018. "Good afternoon. I don't have any concerns regarding the proposed addition at 26 Long Avenue. Thank you for your consideration." We have a memo from the Town Planner, Ms. Jean Bubon, dated February 14, 2018. Do you know you're multitasking, but do you wanna give a brief synopsis of your memo to the board?
Yes. So my memo really just gives an overview of the previous approval and what they're requesting this time and that staff reviewed the application and noted no major concerns. I made note of the comment from the conservation agent, which sounds like that was addressed. She couldn't tell if the drip strip was under the roof line and it sounds like it is. And then I said, "Prior to considering granting a special permit, the board would have to determine if this proposal would be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity."
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Miss Jean Marinelli a question?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Marinelli, you said you hadn't seen these reports. Were you present at their meeting, when they had the meeting?
Wasn't...
Conservation?
No.
Was there anybody there representing?
I did not even know they had a meeting. Was this a meeting or...
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't a meeting, the original one?
No, this is...well, the original approval he was at, he was approved to raise the house and build the new house.
I'm talking about the meeting of the 3rd. They never had to come forward?
No, they did not have to file with conservation. This is just Becky Gendrow's comments to me because I sent the application to everyone to review.
All right. So we have the two memos.
Right. So the first one was from Glenn Colburn.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
That was the approval. So this was their permit that they got the first time. With the new application, we send it for staff review and these are Rebecca Gendrow, our current conservation agent's comments. She's saying, "At this time, I do not anticipate any concerns with the proposed house addition and proposed porch to this project as they are located further from the resource areas."
Right.
"The conditions outlined in 2003, 2007 still apply to the project." And then she questioned the drip strip. So that was not at a meeting. That was just her memo to us.
Okay, that was just her memo, but there was previously...
Back last February.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, right. And he was...
Yes, I was there.
That's what I'm asking. So you knew what the concerns were there when you went for the determination. All right, that's what I was just trying to stop. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns for the applicants? Being none, are we ready to entertain a motion?
As I said, I would like to see a deed description before I would...
So let me ask you this. As far as determining whether or not this 10%, excuse me, this 10% increase in the nonconformity, whether that makes this project more detrimental to the neighborhood? How would the deed description help you make that decision?
I wanna know about a private road, the paper road. I would like to know exactly dimensions and everything there.
Okay, so you think...
I mean, I can't go out and measure the site or anything, but I'm a little concerned 'cause we already changed the envelope.
Okay.
And now we're coming forward to change it again. We granted a determination for the increase. Now we're additionally changing everything again. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm not sure about what's gonna happen to the water there after having seen it. I don't know if you saw it.
I did. But how is the deed description going to help us make the decision?
Having read many deed descriptions, I find a lot of information in there.
Okay.
That would not necessarily be forthcoming to me anywhere else.
Well, would the paper road show up in her deed?
It might. I don't know. I have to see.
It's not her property. We know...
Yeah. See, we usually get a deed description when you're coming for a special permit. Is that correct, Mrs. Bubon?
No, we only ask for the front page of the deed, which just proves ownership. So not always is the deed description on there.
My original file. You should have that.
Yeah, that's what I was just thumbing through.
I don't ever remember seeing one. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. I'm assuming it was in the original application, which we have here too, and I just can't...it's checked off that it's here in the original application, but I'm sorry, I can't put my fingers on it right now.
May I ask our town representative a question? I've mentioned that I'm okay to approve it based on the neighborhood and the other houses and how everything appears there and everything else that's been discussed. I think it's okay. However, are we being remiss as a board if we did approve it, let's say, because we don't have proof of that paper road or the abutting land belonging to the town and where the property lines are? Or could we do something where if we were to approve it, say, okay, we'll approve it upon the condition that we can verify the existence of that paper road and other town lands that may abut that paper road so that something down doesn't come...
Yeah.
I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable with that because I don't know that I can find anything on that paper road.
Okay.
I mean, perhaps the title examiner did, but that's what they do for a living. They dig and dig and dig.
Sometimes the chain of ownership will show it though.
Sometimes it will, but to condition something on maybe finding something, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. I believe that we have a plan by a surveyor that does show clearly the boundaries of the property and it's stamped by a registered land surveyor. So I understand what Mrs. Cooney is saying. She's very meticulous and she'll read through that deed and she'll figure out what's around it. But I don't, you know, I do think you have the boundaries of her lot. It's been said that the shed is not on her property. She's agreed to remove the shed if need be and I'm not sure that I would bear any fruit for you in looking for a description of that paper road.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
I'll give you the last word.
I'm just understanding why that paper road...that paper road is outside my boundaries. I'm not trying to use that paper road.
Okay.
It's just there.
I think we understand that. Okay. Man?
I do recall from my folder that I believe the paper road is 25 feet.
Okay.
And it kinda starts at the...just a little bit past the front of my shed.
All right. It's sounding to me that given what Ms. Bubon said, that this paper road should not impact the decision as to whether or not this increase in nonconformity creates a more detrimental situation in the neighborhood. Is that correct, Ms. Bubon?
Well, yes, because it doesn't add any area to her property. So I think that you need to review this just considering what she actually owns.
Understood.
All right. So if...may I follow up some?
You may.
So if the shed is removed and then you say you're gonna put something underneath so she could store stuff there. So that's a modification to the plan, is it not?
It's not really modifying. I'm just gonna hang some two-by-fours and a couple pieces of plywood so that she can get her stuff up off the ground. It's not gonna be a big elaborate constructed box with doors on it or anything like that. Just something she could throw her tools in as she's walking by. It's just a shelf under the house, not a...
Yeah, I was just curious, you know? I'm trying to imagine it, that's all.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Well...
No.
I wanna say something.
Okay.
Adding the six feet to the house, there's still gonna be 20 feet to the property line. I can live with that. That's a good distance, but 11 feet is just so close. I don't care what's on the other side.
It's an abandoned road that they don't even see. It's all over the ground. It's an abandoned road.
It's...I mean, and increasing the lot coverage to almost 50%, those two things, I don't...
Is it gonna hurt it though? Is it detrimental to the neighborhood? It's not blocking any views. I'm dealing with the extra runoff water.
It's increasing the nonconformity of the lot by 10%.
I know. That's why I'm being...
Yeah, no, I know. You're arguing that it's not. Clearly understood. Clearly understood. But there are members of the board that apparently feel otherwise or may feel otherwise. I think that we ought to move along with a motion and a vote and see where we end up. Does that sound...tell me out, board. Does that sound like a plan or...
It's a plan.
Do we need...you need some more time? Do... Do you have the looks on, Mark?
No, I think I know what... Don't ask me to make a motion right now.
Don't?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, so can I just ask one? So my concern is that the nonconformity has been increased for added convenience, you know? Because, you know, the applicant could use the house as was approved, right?
That's correct.
But you need this added convenience, right?
This is really added convenience? This making up for the yard that she can't use in the back due to the stipulations that were placed on the project from conservation?
Yeah, but, you know, when you say she can't use, right, you know, it...I mean, she's not supposed to use it.
Yeah, it's reality.
No, but she's not supposed to use it, right? Because of the nonconform...well, because, you know, you're supposed to... How many percent is it again, coverage?
15%. They're up to 49.
So because of the lot coverage, right, you're supposed to use X amount of lot coverage. So whatever you wanna do has to be within the stipulated lot coverage, right? But, you know, we've gone way beyond that stipulated lot coverage. And, you know, one thing I'm concerned about is setting precedents, you know? So...
Can I interpret? Yeah. The neighbor right next door set the precedence with the lot coverage.
No, this...
And I'm not even going that way. She just...due to the stipulations set by conservation, that the property is too wet in the back for her to use. So she's allowed to use her property, but it's too wet because of the stipulations that were set by the boards here.
Mr. Marinelli, when you bought the property, did you know it was 3,000 square feet? Did you see the size of the piece of existing house that was on it?
Yes.
So you know that you only had so much square footage to look at?
Well, the...
And I'm sure you probably understood what zone you were in and what the bylaws are.
Well, I don't live in Sturbridge, so I wouldn't have been familiar, but the existing house, the prior house that was torn down, had a huge deck on the back that took up the same amount of space that I'm asking to use. So I just...I guess I thought that because there was a deck there that took up the same amount of space and another porch and...
But it was a deck. It wasn't a porch and it wasn't an addition.
But it was the same, you know, it was going out to the same place in the yard.
So wouldn't that deck have been calculated into the...
Yes, it was. We turned that deck, the lot coverage from the deck.
They did originally.
We made living space.
They originally included it, see?
So let's look at this another way.
We're just going more.
If we can. And I'm just talking to my colleagues on the board.
All right.
This came in for a variance.
No, it didn't.
No, it didn't. I know that. But if it did... And the variance that was requested was due to the increased lot coverage. And the applicant came in with these topography issues and all of that. How would we...how would we be looking at that?
You wouldn't have it because there would be three criteria for a variance.
Yeah.
And this...and it would have to meet those three criteria. But this situation here is not unique to the area. So that, you know, it's not unique to the district. There's a lot of wet ones there.
No, I completely understand, but we have some concern, legitimate concern by the board members and I am just trying to think this through because I haven't made up my mind.
I wouldn't be able to give a grant of variance on this, knowing what I know now because it wouldn't meet the three criteria.
And the three criteria are?
Soil-shaped topography.
Right.
And it has to be unique to the district that it's in.
You're suggesting that it's not unique.
It's not because it's all wetly. You're dealing with wet ones all around there. Am I right, Mrs. Bubon?
I would say that it's not unique to the district.
Exactly.
We'd have an issue. That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Which is...
Which is different.
Why I didn't advise them to apply for a variance.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to get as much information as possible to help with this.
You have...you have five members here now. I don't know if you want to take consensus or... Do you wanna continue it and see if you have some other members and they can...
Right, so...
Review the information and the meeting and attest to the fact that they've heard all the facts that we've discussed and then they would be able to weigh in on it. So my suggestion would be to ask for a continuance. Have the members that were not present today, okay? Because you need five positive votes to go forward for this. And they can attest that they watched on... that they watched on video, on television cable, all the facts, reviewed all the materials, and then they would have a vote and a weigh-in on it. So that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I think that's the point. Go ahead, Jean.
So my...
Say something, but we don't want to say.
Yes, so I would agree with that, that, you know, you have seven members. However, the next meeting is the 21st. Mr. Kelly cannot be present at the next meeting of the 21st, so that will bring you back down to six, and you need five affirmative out of seven.
Well, at least you got six. So the only thing is, as long as, so that we don't go into constructive approval...
Well, we can if it's continued.
Right, no, I think...
No, no, that's what I'm saying. So we don't go into constructive approval whenever it...
It's a special permit, so as long as it's continued, then it would...
Right, with consent, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
With consent, written consent.
Right.
When the next available meeting, when you potentially have a full Board, or go forward with six members, you know?
Well, I think on the 21st, we're at six. If somebody else can't make it that evening, we're right back to where we started tonight.
Right, you want to make... I think the applicant wants to make sure that they're presenting before seven Board members.
Yeah.
And nothing less than that.
I would agree.
So I would, that's what I would do.
I disagree with that.
I would just keep asking for continuances until you have a full Board that can attest to the fact that they have viewed what the information that you presented and the questions and everything. They would be able to see everything and hear the full discussion.
Also, the other problem that we have is we're coming up along town elections. We have two seated members who are not running for reelection. So if this matter doesn't get resolved prior to the elections, we need to start all over again.
Well, well...
Because somebody who was not a sitting Board member cannot act, cannot review the tape and act.
Exactly.
So we need to resolve this, this month, in March. So we have a very full agenda on the 21st. I don't know if the Board would entertain...
Another date?
Another date, just to try to resolve this before the elections.
Give him a break, I'll do something.
Because on the 21st, you're down to six?
Yeah, yeah.
We're quite full. I don't know if it's possible for people to come in the Wednesday before for a brief meeting, or...
What date is that?
Uh, March 14th. I don't know.
And if it does get continued, I'd like to request that they stake out six feet for the addition and then the additional nine feet or whatever it is for the porch, and even stake out where the end of the lot is.
Okay.
So that was, it was confusing as to where does the lot end.
Yeah.
And also, you have something from your title examiner on the paper road?
They're delaying it for a couple weeks.
Do you have your title report still?
I don't have that with me.
No, not with you, but I mean if it gets continued.
I would have to look and...
See if you could...
I think that I do have this map from 1920 that shows.
Okay.
It's not.
Any data that you have, you know, is evidence, so it might be helpful.
And I can always...
Should I be able to get it from the town somewhere? Maybe the Highway Department or something?
I don't think you'll find it that long.
I think that was probably...
We didn't have bylaws or stuff till 1965, so a lot of the information before. That's why you're seeing stuff going on now because it predated our actual bylaws. Otherwise, this would never happen.
So if I can't find it in my records, I think I can contact the lawyer that did the closing, because I know she has it.
Sure, that would be great, and if you could bring it over.
The more information that you can to substantiate, you know, your claim, the better it is for you. So...
I don't mean any disrespect by this, but I'm not understanding why the paper road is an issue.
It's not just the paper road. It's the other thing, you know.
But what I'm asking for, if you have a deed paperwork, if you have...
Here's the thing. I get what you're saying. Paper road's not an issue, but here's the reality of it. There's five people sitting on this Board. We had to take a vote today based on what you heard. Do you think you'd prevail, or do you think you'd lose?
Like I said, I didn't, I don't know how it would go. I don't know what anybody's feeling. I don't know what anybody's thinking.
Yeah, I think there's some concern with at least one or two Board members that in doing their job to the best of their ability, they want to resolve. That's sort of the issue. We can, if you don't want to continue it, we can take a vote right now.
Well, you can do, like I said, it's...
I have no problem continuing.
Yeah, so that's all. And I think that, you know, a lawyer would tell you, get seven people on that Board.
Exactly.
Because you need five to... So that's all we're saying here, that you, right now you have at least one, maybe two people that, I don't know, not feeling it. So...
Well, there, you know, several of us have asked viable questions.
No question. And that's what we want from your highly-paid volunteer members of the Board.
Yeah, right.
You want due diligence. I mean, you really want due diligence. So, yep, I know, you thought this was, you're probably walking out, I think this was an Inquisition.
No, I didn't think it was a K-1.
But there are some legitimate, there are some legitimate, you know, issues that need to be teased out. This is not like you're going from 15 percent to 20 percent, or even 25 percent. You're already, you know, maxed to the gills here.
And like I said, the smallest lot that, as long as I've been on the Board...
We gotta vet all of this, and, you know, I think if there were a vote today, I, just based on what I've heard, I'm not sure you'd prevail.
But I will say, I do like that stained glass window upstairs.
I can't wait to come put one in at your house.
Huh?
I can't wait to put one in for you.
So are we doing the 14th?
I don't like them.
14th is good? I don't know how it is for...
I don't know how it'll be for Mary Ann and Tom.
Um, Mary Ann, I mean, that's the other issue, too.
Right.
I mean, yeah, I don't know how it's gonna be.
The best we can do is try, because we know the 21st doesn't work for you. And I would say if the 14th doesn't work, then we'll have no choice but to continue it to the 21st or the 28th.
The first available day that we can get all seven members of the Board to review the case.
Right.
All right, that won't work either. Okay, so that, the 14th will work for me.
So how do you want to leave it?
I would have someone make a motion to continue the public hearing till March 14th at 6:35 PM.
So moved.
And I don't know if you could do, unless the other two members cannot make it on the 14th, then to try for the 28th, which I know is not to a date certain. But I guess if worse comes to...
Well, you want to be, we want to cover ourselves.
I want to cover it.
Yeah.
Because you're running out of time. You basically have four weeks where...
So I can make a motion, then, that we continue the public hearing for 26th Long Avenue Road to March 14th or March 28th?
At 6:35.
At 6:35.
What about March 21st?
Well, Kevin won't be there.
Oh, okay.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Date to be confirmed.
Depending upon ver...
Yeah.
Depending upon viability.
Availability of all Board members.
Right.
Availability. And then we will confirm with you, and I'll confirm with all of you.
So what is it that I can get for you guys, that I can bring copies of, that you can check?
She thinks she might be able to get a copy of the deed descrip-- because sometimes I can check the chain of ownership that way and find out what's going on.
I want to get you that paperwork early.
And also...
Stake out the property as requested by Liz.
Right, and look...
You want to come down, just any day that you're there?
You said you...
Well, I think it's a great point because it's for all of us. Please stake it out.
To actually explain to...
No, I've been there. Not only this time, the time before, so...
Yeah.
If you stake it out, it's a lot easier to visualize.
Right.
Yes.
Everything.
I have no problem. I will mark it up.
Thank you.
And it's gonna rain in the next three or four days.
That's great news, thank you.
If you can find anything on the original subdivision of that land for your...
Do you have shingles to put on or anything?
No, but, you know, I don't like being...
You do.
All right, so that being said...
I made a motion, needs to be seconded.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
So we're not closing the public meeting? We are continuing the public meeting?
No, we're not closing it.
So now all we need is a motion to adjourn?
No.
No, you didn't vote on the continuation.
You didn't vote on the continuation.
All right. All in favor of the continuation? All opposed? Okay, the Ayes got it.
All right, Jean, now, there again, going back to my question about constructive approval. Do we need a letter agreeing?
No, we don't, because it's a special permit process. The only requirement is that we open the hearing within 65 days.
That's what I'm wondering, if we have, but...
No, you've, and that you render a decision after, 90 days after it's closed.
Right after that, okay, because I...
So we're fine.
One constructive approval in a lifetime is enough.
Yeah, no.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Our next date is 14th.
Either the 14th or the 28th at 6:35, depending upon availability of the members.
There'll be timely notice.
And I will notify you. We'll contact the other two members tomorrow.
All right. Anything else we need to do? Any...
And our 3:21 meeting is still on.
Oh, yes, and you'll be here for a while.
So Liz has the...
The reins.
Passed the switch. Anything else? I'll accept now a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes, second.
Yeah, I was gonna say the second.
Great meeting. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Second for adjournment?
What's that?
Who's second?
I second.
Oh, Fidelis.
But thanks for keeping on top of me.
Now, I will give you that paperwork, the information.
Well, for all of our packets, yeah, thank you. The more, the more you have to substantiate, you're, it's better for you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Good.
I'm glad you liked the window.
Oh, I love it, because I happen to like Tiffany lamps and things like that. It's beautiful.
We need to stick, what happens to it?
I love all of that stuff. I love it.